This meeting is being recorded. I have a lot of angst on the way that we've been treated as far as public. I've lost faith in your director. We multiple times have asked not to have special meetings at special times with special agendaized things. You had an agenda last time and the items, I guess you have a staff report on two of your things you're putting in closed session. I saw no staff report or no comment on the third one, which seems to be possibly majorly contentious. These staff reports that come out at three o'clock, we don't have all day to keep checking in and checking these things, neither do you as far as members go. These reports, if you can't get them out a minimum of 24 hours before the meeting, it gives a perception you're trying to hide things. And so I'm going to go ahead and make a vote of no confidence in your executive director. I'm going to ask that next meeting, you schedule a, an assessment of the director, just the same as the county does and everybody else, and you do on a yearly basis. And I'm also suggesting you leave yourself an option as far as potentially nominating a interim director based upon the outcome of that assessment. So that's coming from the public. This is a vote of no confidence. This needs to stop. We've been promised time after time by both you folks and your staff that it wouldn't continue, and yet we had a meeting last Thursday. Now, I also want to note that we did get something at three o'clock for two of your agendaized items for the regular meeting, which are also on your closed session. Nothing for the third one, and there's not time enough to go through. And I do have a lot of angst with the one I saw where you're throwing all your tenants out. I mean, not all your tenants out, but there was a long list of like HSU and things seem to be possibly being thrown. Have those people been notified of this meeting specifically because they are majorly affected by the action you're taking here? I saw no notification, notices, or anything I saw. So I highly recommend that you table both of those items, all three of the items you have as far as action items, until you can get staff reports out 20, and it should have been the same staff report from last week. Those should have been put out last week. I'm sure I've used my three minutes. That's my complaint for this time. Those are my requests. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kent. Your side, would you like to make any public comments at this time?
Yeah, can you hear me? I'm not, I was on mute at first and I didn't hear the full instructions. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, okay, great. Okay. Well, yeah, you know, I've always wanted to support this Nordic Farm project. I really, I think it'd be a very good thing for this community, but it does disturb me when, you know, I check my phone for my emails and I'm out and about. I don't really have a chance to evaluate what's going on in two hours before a meeting. We're getting reports and I haven't even had time, I just got in, I haven't had time to go over this. So I'm not sure if you're, if the commissioners are getting these reports three hours before. I think the requirements are like 72 hours before, but I don't know. I gotta share, you know, Kent's angst on this. It's like this is supposed to be upfront and the special meeting things is getting pretty old, I gotta say. You know, just all of a sudden boom, you know, pops up and these Zoom meetings are challenging enough, but there definitely needs to be more transparency. It's really kind of disturbing and that's about all I have to say at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna check, but it doesn't seem like there's any other members of the public here. But if there are any members of the public who wish to make public comment, either on items not on the agenda or closed session items, please let us know now. Hearing none, we are going to move into executive closed session. We will reopen the meeting to public meeting at 6:00 PM. So I think at this time, Adam is going to take everybody out of the meeting who's not in closed session, or you can just disconnect yourselves from the meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the comments. I appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll catch you guys later.
Bye. Maggie Fleming, our local, our local person who do the prosecuting attorney, our district attorney. And I hate to have to go that way, but we keep doing this over and over again. You guys are educated, allegedly your staff, I mean, your staff allegedly has educated the process goes, and then the consideration for transparency. So I have a vote of no confidence in Larry Otter. As I requested before, I requested you evaluate him at the next meeting and also leave yourself the option of replacing him with an interim replacement as far as that goes. Should you move forward on these other objects, of course, I think your contracts most likely will be voided, but we can find out and that will not be good if you have a contract you're counting on that's voided down the road. So that's my advice to you is not move forward on any of these items that you have on your agenda. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to make public comment at this time? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to new business consideration, item A, consideration of lease of real property on the small peninsula Humboldt County with assessors, personal numbers 401112021 and 401112024 to California Marine Investments LLC. May we get a staff report on this, please?
Yes. Well, first off, I'd like to apologize because when we put out the agenda, which was for April 29th, 2020, the email that went out accompanying the agenda that had the link on it, had the wrong day of the week on it. It had the correct date, but had the wrong day of the week. That was only in the email and was not on the agenda. The agenda was correct that went out on Friday. And so I apologize for that. And so that with the, and so now for the staff report, the supplemental staff report that went out within the packet, what staff is recommending that the board not authorize staff to release a full, to approve a full lease agreement, but rather to execute the letter of intent to draft a lease amendment that was included in the supplemental staff report. The letter of intent basically outlines the general terms for which we would draft in a formal agreement. And then the plan is, is that when we get the formal agreement, then we would schedule a meeting with the board and present that full lease amendment to the public for their review and comment prior to any, the board taking any action on the property. And so then the Harbor District has an existing lease with Nordic Aqua Farms, which is for 30 acres of that site. And we've had some discussions over the last couple of meetings with the board in closed session about a potential expansion of three acres of the 33 acres, or I'm sorry, three additional acres for approximately a total of 33 acres. But this would require the removal of a portion of the shops and stores building as part of that. And there'd be seven tenants that potentially could be relocated as part of that process. So as part of that, we, before this meeting, we reached out and made connection with the majority of those tenants, and we will be following through with the rest of those tenants to inform them of this action. We wanted them to be the first ones to hear this before they saw it on the agenda or anything else. And so that's why we made the outreach efforts to the tenants before we contacted anyone else. And so thus far, the, our intention is to work very cooperatively with them on the relocation. And relocation is also government governed by the California relocation existence law, which is in government code 7260. And so with that, we told all of the tenants and we will be putting out a formal notice to all the tenants if the board directs us to proceed with this letter of intent, which will essentially say that each of the tenants may be able to receive assistance, you know, for advisory or like brokerage service or other kinds of things to find a new place to rent. They also might be eligible for a certain amount of moving expenses that are authorized under the state law. And there also might be established ability to have reestablishments penalties for such things as if the place they find has a higher rent than what they're currently paying, then there might be some additional relocation payments for specified period of time and also the costs that are associated with that. We've analyzed what the potential relocation costs are, and we've had discussions with Nordic on those costs prior to the deliberations. And so the current lease agreement that we have with Nordic is for $175,000, $179,000 for the existing 30 acre lease that we have. For the additional approximately three acres, we've negotiated $175,000 annual lease payment for a total of $34,000 annual lease payment from Nordic Aqua Farms for the approximately 33 acres. Nordic Aqua Farms would pay all the costs associated to relocate, you know, five of the seven businesses that would require relocation, and the district would pay the cost to relocate the two other tenants. The two tenants that the district would be paying the cost for relocation are, they're on month to month and that they, they were already scheduled to be moved out. And so we're not seeing significant issues with the relocation of those two tenants, which is primarily for simple storage and it's approximately less than 2,000 square foot for each of those. So not large square footage. And so Nordic would pay a non-refundable deposit for $43,750. And what that's for is as the businesses, those seven businesses that are currently in the shops and stores, as they get, and the Harbor District would lose rental income. $43,000 would be used by the Harbor District to make up any lost rent.
I'm starting to jump in and asking everyone not talking to please mute.
How do you do that, Adam? Tell them how to do that. It's F what?
All of us at one shot.
Okay, so then they pay us $43,000 for this small refundable deposit that's meant to make us whole for the loss of any tenants. And they've agreed to pay up to $175,000 annually for any lost revenue that the Harbor District has. We're, of course, we're going to work closely together to try to make sure that there is no loss or minimal lost revenue because it's in the Harbor District's best interest, the tenant's best interest, and Nordic's best interest that if we can have a smooth transition and try not to have as much lost revenue as possible. Within the shops and stores building, what would happen is they would retain, and I'm just going to kind of switch screens here for a second. So currently, the, on the left is the, the building configurations and the lease area that the Harbor District currently has. On the right, it shows that Nordic would be proposing to have this building, which would go over the shops and stores building in this location. Within the shops and stores building, this front portion of the building that is essentially right here would be retained and not torn down. This front portion of the thing currently houses the Harbor District's maintenance facilities that we have, and it also houses Pacific Place, Flake, the Sea Salt Company. And so they would not be required to be relocated and wouldn't be, there might be some minimal disruption during the teardown process, but we would obviously work with them during that process as well, but they wouldn't require any relocation associated with that. The proposed lease area, the current lease area has that they would lease from the Harbor District, the area, the lease area plus option one, plus option two, and the option three. The new lease area would be this option four lease area. And then the Harbor District would retain the area that's adjacent to the ocean outfall because we need that. And plus, we would retain a full right to use the utilities along this northern boundary because this is an important component because our stormwater, all of our utilities and those things go through this area. And so as part of this process, when this building is torn down and they tear down these other portions, they're going to disrupt the utilities that go to our warehouse facility and also to our existing shops and stores. What they've agreed to do is to do all of the CAD drawings, all of the permitting and all the construction and all the costs associated with relocating, all of the utilities that would be disruptive and that we need as part of to maintain our existing facilities. In addition, what we negotiated was there's electric substation that's over here. The current agreement has them paying $500,000 when, after they receive their permits as a one-time payment for the use of 18 of the 20 megawatt substation. What was negotiated was that they would, for the additional two megawatt capacity of the 20 megawatt substation, that they would pay the district an additional $56,000 for a total of $556,000. Again, at the time after they get their, their coastal development permits. And then in addition to that, Nordic Aqua Farms would do all the engineering and permitted to expand that existing substation capacity from the existing 20 megawatts to an additional five megawatts, which could be utilized for additional Harbor District tenants. The Harbor, the Nordic Aqua Farms would not pay for the construction of those, that additional five megawatts of capacity of the substation. But what they would do is they would, all the permitting and all the engineering through Pacific Gas and Electric would, would be approved. And that way, in the future, if we needed to have a tenant comes in and it needs that additional capacity, then they would, they could expand those facilities. Nordic also would have the right to expand that facility for their own purposes if they needed to expand it. The Harbor District has a sea chest that we maintain in the, in this area of the Redwood Rain Terminal Dock. And as part of the existing lease agreement, they have the ability to access 3,000 gallons per minute of the 5,500 gallon per minute capacity of the sea chest. What they've asked for is to increase that to a total of 7,000 gallons per minute. And that 7,000 gallons per minute would be, come from not just the red tank, or I'm sorry, the Redwood Rain Terminal 2 sea chest, but the Harbor District also maintains a sea chest at our red tank dock facility, which is immediately to the north of this. And they would pay the permitting and mitigation and installation costs for both the red tank and the RMT2 intake systems. And that agrees agreement also already has included into that, that they would pay a usage fee for using the water as laid out in the Harbor District's fee schedule, which still has to be determined at a later date. So as I mentioned, there's going to be a significant amount of disruptions with the utility services when Nordic takes out this area and also the building, our fire suppression system, our water system, our sewer system, all of these things. And so what we negotiated with Nordic is they would take all, not just for their own lease area, but they would take and put on CAD all of the utilities for our existing facility so that we can see the engineering designs of how they're going to connect into our facility to make sure that there's no disruption of any services for our existing tenants and also that our new facility is brought up to new standards as opposed to the older infrastructure that we currently have at Redwood Rain Terminals 2. And lastly, we would give them authorization to have access to these portions of the property the same as we give, have given access to all the rest of them so that they can do their own inspections and testings and all those other components. And so again, I'm not asking the board to approve a lease agreement tonight. What I'm asking the board to do is there's a term sheet that was included in the supplemental staff report that was put out today and that that term sheet was signed by Nordic Aqua Farms. And what I'm asking the board is to authorize me to sign that letter of intent. And again, that letter of intent outlines these terms that I just went over with the board. And then with, from that letter of intent, what would happen is we would draft the actual lease agreement and then that lease agreement would come back to the board for final approval. And, and we would make that lease agreement available to the public, you know, prior to that meeting. The goal that we have set is that the full lease agreement and the relocation plan, the full relocation plan for the tenants, our goal would be, and I'm not saying this is 100% what, what would happen, that would be on the May 14th board meeting that the board has already scheduled. And so with that, again, my recommendation is to authorize your executive director to sign the letter of intent that's included in the package. And then we would work to then draft the lease agreement and bring that back. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Do we have a motion for the executive director to sign the letter of intent and to negotiate a lease, which will come back to the board?
This is Greg Dale. I will make the motion for the executive director to sign the letter of intent and to negotiate a lease.
This is Larry Doss. I'll second that.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion or questions from the board?
You know, one other thing that I guess is kind of obvious, but Larry also made sure that the district will have not only utility easements along that retained area all the way up to the bay or up to our, yeah, up to the bay front, but also on the southern portion of the property is also worked out in, in discussions, easements, and those are not just utility, those are also for ingress egress. So there's complete vehicle access to the docks from both the north and the south along the, the existing road around the west side of the property and on along the bay. So there's full access for the district to have in the future for any other developments that may come our way.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the board? I see Pat is saying that he's been muted. Adam, are you able to unmute the rest of the board?
Yeah, I am. Everyone should be able to unmute themselves at this point though, but I will go through and attempt to do it for them. I think you need to unmute yourself though.
Hello.
Yeah, there you go.
Yes, now the last thing, the last thing you want to do is make an Irishman feel like he's repressed. It's always a bad idea. So watch, watch those mute things. I think it's really laudable that this action that we're taking this evening is just a step and that Larry Otter has laid out clearly our intent on this very large and important business deal going forward. So the actions we're taking now facilitate activities that will transpire at a future meeting that has better announcement. And so I'm sensitive to the public's frustration given our new process. And I'm comfortable, and thank you, my other commissioners, for making that motion when I was muted.
Okay, and is there anyone else from the board who would like to comment on this? I would just like to say that I applaud the effort that's been made to work with the existing tenants and continue to work with the existing tenants. And I know there's a lot of things we need to do legally and a lot that we're going to try and do above and beyond that. Because that's not our goal to try and burn anybody, but that this is a coastal dependent industry and use, and that has been our mandate to find coastal dependent uses for this property. And so it is aligned with the goals that have been set forth. So if there's no other discussion from the board, I will momentarily open it to public comment. And now this is always complicated on these type of virtual meetings. So first, I would just like to ask if there are any public who would like to comment on it, just state your name and then we'll go back and take comment one at a time.
Kent Swolatsky, yes, please.
Thank you, Kent. Are there any other public who would like to make comment on this? Hearing none, we will go to Kent.
One person show today. Well, I wish to make one comment. You have a Plan West, Hardeners, Inc., and they gave you a map, but it doesn't even appear to have an arrow on it for your direction. That was very unprofessional. Agendaized here, I say consideration of lease and real property on the small peninsula Humboldt County with assessors numbers to California Marine Investments LLC. Recommendation, staff recommends the board direct staff to execute lease documents. So we're apparently not taking staff recommendation, or we have a new one. The problem I have here is it's not, it's not noticed correctly. I don't think you can even take action on it because all of your other agenda items says your tenant is to be Nordic Aqua Farms. So if someone was tracking, let's say Jennifer Calder, someone was keeping an eye on Nordic Aqua Farms or anybody who was, either to support or to be against them, they would not be aware that this item was taking place because it says California Marine Investments LLC. Highly recommend, and I make legal objection to this moving forward at this time and needs to be re-agendized for another meeting. Thank you for my opportunity to speak. May be a wonderful project. The main reason it was given that we weren't informed of this was the tenants were not notified and they wanted, Larry wanted to notify them first. I can understand that. But this thing was agendized a week ago and yet I, I don't know, I don't hear anybody else from those firms making comments. I wonder if they're on the line. I wonder if they were notified of this specific meeting to have input or not. These are common courtesies, crossing Ts, dotting Is, which has been an ongoing problem with the Harbor District. And so I object to you moving forward on the legal grounds that I've just mentioned. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kent. And I will check one more time if there are any other public who wish to make public comment on this item. Okay, I am hearing none. I can bring it back to the board, but we have legal counsel still on the line, which I believe we do. I'd like to just make sure that the way that this item is agendized, that we are still able to make a motion that is not under the recommendation because as board we can choose to make whatever motion we decide to, for, to direct the executive director to sign a letter of intent and begin negotiations and bring back a lease to us at a later date. Do you have any comment on that, Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ryan. So absolutely, yes, the board can take action tonight. The action that the board is taking is a lesser action than what has been recommended by staff. That recommendation has been revised tonight for clarity as to the process. With respect to California Marine Investments, that is the actual legal entity under which Nordic Aqua Farms is leasing this property. Nordic Aqua Farms is the parent company of California Marine Investments. Our current lease is with California Marine Investments.
Thank you, Ryan. But just, you know, to note that, because not everyone in the public knows that on future items involving Nordic, it should maybe say something on the item so that the public can be aware that that's what we're discussing.
The incremental nature of this action is, gives me complete comfort in supporting the motion. Commissioner Higgins.
Thank you, Patrick. Before we move to...
Steven, I'd just add that, you know, the, the action that the board is taking tonight is to authorize the executive director to sign a non-binding letter of intent. The final action will be taken on the 14th.
Hopefully on the 14th if everything is prepared by then, but that's definitely our goal is what I heard. Okay, so I think we can call a vote on this item.
I've been raising my hand. It hasn't been working again.
I, I'm sorry, Richard. It seems like you're just going to have to speak up. But before you do, Adam, are you able to see Richard raising his hand?
Yeah, are you not?
I'm not, no. I don't, I don't get that. I think just you get it.
Okay, well, I will, when I see someone raise their hand, I'll call it to your attention, I guess. I'll try to jump in for them.
I guess that's what we have to do, or, I mean, maybe you can directly chat to me. I guess that's what we have to do, or, I mean, maybe you can directly chat to me. But I think we'll have to figure out the intricacies of Zoom as we move on. But yeah, I don't see your hand being raised, Richard, but go ahead.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with moving this forward since we have two weeks before we're going to be addressing it again. And so all the other tenants will know by then, but I had a question for staff. If Chris Mickelson is still on the line there, whether he was, did he let the tenants today know that there was going to be a decision possibly made tonight regarding actions that may affect them?
Five of the seven tenants that may be affected were contacted, spoke with them individually. They were made aware that this would be coming forward this evening. It would be, it would receive a potential letter sometime almost immediately after this, that on May 8th, we look to have a draft of the relocation. And then it would be formally visited on May 14th, and they were also encouraged to visit our website, participate in our meetings and attend the meeting on the 14th of May.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Absolutely.
I'd like to commend staff for their diligence.
Okay, thank you. Then I believe we are now ready for a vote.
Mr. Dale.
Yes.
Mr. Doss.
Yes.
Mr. Marks.
Yes.
Mr. Higgins.
Oh, yeah.
And Commissioner Coleman.
Yes. Thank you. Then I'm going to move on to item B. Consideration of lease or other real property agreement on the Samoa Peninsula, Humboldt County, with assessors parcels numbers 401112021, 401111006, 401122011, 401122012, 401031061, 401031070, and there's a lot of them, 401031040 and 401031055 with Green Diamond Resource Company and Danco.
Could you repeat that, please?
I'll, I'll just use the prime numbers this time.
I got you.
No, he's kidding. He's kidding, Chairman.
So the, the area that we're talking about is basically the area between Redwood Marine Terminal 1 and Redwood Marine Terminal 2, this whole area. You know, in essence, you know, this used to be basically two primary mills owned this whole thing. And so there was a whole series of different, of these shared service agreements and easements and other things that would happen as, as one of the mills would grow or may needed additional property, then they would take over and utilize services from some of the other properties. Well, what, what's been happening is that, that as the original mills no longer own the property and the parcels are being subdivided off into multiple individual property owners, is that the, the underlying infrastructure isn't changing. And so what is happening is that the town of Samoa is getting new infrastructure and it should be under construction and hopefully having a new wastewater treatment plant, new fire hydrants, new water tank and a number of other infrastructure services. Hopefully by the end of this, this current year. I want to really zoom in on this red tank. And this red tank is located right here in this location, right, pretty much in the middle. And the important point about this red tank is that the red tank supplies, supplies the fire suppression system for the town of Samoa. And then from the town of Samoa, it also goes and feeds the Timber Heritage Association buildings that they have, that they leased from the Harbor District. And also our buildings that we have in Redwood Marine Terminal 1. And it also, there's also fire hydrants that are around Green Diamond's log deck that they have there. Well, what currently happens is the power meter is on Green Diamond's property and Green Diamonds receives the power bill. The water is supplied from the town of Samoa and the town of Samoa pays the water bill. And literally there is a water line that goes and feeds the red tank from the town of Samoa to the red tank. The red tank itself is on the Harbor District's property. And so hence the need for a shared service agreement of who pays the utilities, who does the maintenance, who supplies the water, who does all of these things are really important components. Green Diamond put on notice that they were planning to terminate this agreement because they no longer wanted to pay the power bill, which is approximately $3,000 to $4,000 a month at some points. And so what we all agreed is that we did not want to see fire service disrupted for the town of Samoa and the area and wanted additional time while Danco and the town of Samoa upgrades their utility system. And so what's included in the package and the direction that I'm seeking is that the Harbor District would take over the electric meter from Green Diamond. And this electric meter not only serves red tank, but it also serves in overhead power lines that go and serve the Harbor District's property at Redwood Marine Terminal 1. And it serves the hagfish and then also a couple of commercial fishing cold storage units that they have in this area. And so the Harbor District would take over the meter and our tenants at RMT 1 would reimburse the district for the utilities that they serve, that they utilize. And Danco would pay the electricity for the pumps that are in red tank. Green Diamond would continue to provide security patrols on nights and on the weekend. And they would also do periodic maintenance. There's maintenance checklists and other things that they have in order to make sure that the backup generating system is working and in order to make sure that the fire system is in operation. All those have been reviewed and approved by the Samoa Community Service District, the, the, the fire chief out there. And that the Harbor District would take over in conjunction with Danco, the maintenance during the weekdays, because the Harbor District regularly patrols these properties. And Danco has, is building their apartment complex, and so they have their staff immediately in the area during the weekdays. It's really on the weekends and at night that the problem occurs. And so because these agreements are set to terminate, or let me rephrase that, have terminated and that all parties have agreed to keep this going, that I'm asking the board to take action by authorizing me to finalize the negotiations, to do, to amend the shared services agreement and then to execute that document. And then I will report back to the board and the public on any action that's taking place on this.
So moved. Commissioner Higgins.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Larry, this is Stephen. I'd like to ask, what is the time sensitive nature of this issue? If we don't act, is the town of Samoa potentially without fire protection?
Well, I don't want to say that it, you know, everybody is working together to prevent that. But the reality is, is that the agreement is officially, I don't want to say legally, but it's past the termination date. Let's just put it that way. And all parties have agreed that it's in everyone's best interest to keep the services provided. And that this action that we've negotiated will basically be a bridge until Danco gets his systems online. We all thought they would be online a little bit sooner than they, than they were. And so it's just taken a little bit longer. But if there is not action, there is the possibility that the electricity would be cut off and then the pumps would not run for that feed the fire suppression system.
Commissioner Coleman, this is Commissioner Higgins again, and I do believe that, well, Larry is always understated that this is action that needed to be taken immediately to make sure that we are covered in terms of the safety of the community of Samoa. And it does serve us in the longer term, but it was a matter of urgency. And so therefore I am comfortable with my motion. I just wanted to restate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgins, can you please restate your motion? It got a little scratchy in the connection at least here.
My motion was in support of Larry Otker's request. So Larry, can you be more explicit? Because I just basically validated what you asked for. So what are we, what are we moving on?
Specifically, the, I recommend that the board authorize me to negotiate and execute an amendment to the shared services agreement.
Yeah, that's what I moved.
And then is your second still valid, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, I would like to just commend both you, Larry, and the staff and Green Diamond and Danco on scrambling and working together to make sure that the services remain uninterrupted. Anything else from the board? Okay, I will turn it over for a public comment. And once again, first just state if you're in the public and would like to make comment on this issue.
Kent Swatzky, yes, please.
Okay, and do I hear anyone other than Kent Swatzky? It looks like the floor is yours, Kent.
Again, I'm going to mop it up again. Here we go. Through the chair, I have a question for your executive director, Larry Otker, so I can know which project we're talking about. Is this the one in which for months the Harbor District had knowledge that the water system was not functioning, there's not fire suppression out there? And then myself, being the person who heard about that, called the state fire marshal and with a matter of hours, the correct procedures were done to preserve the public health, safety and welfare. If it is, I strongly support you going forward. I still have that question. So if I know if I'm talking about the right project. And I think that was four to six months ago. And my understanding is from your staff, Chris, which I totally respect and, and his skills are phenomenal. You're lucky to have him, that this has been being mitigated as requested by the state fire marshal, or not requested, but required. And I really would like to see this come to fruition. It was mentioned that something about the Scotia Community Services District, is that, has that been, is there a new district that's been formed? Because my understanding is Danco is required to form a district out there, which would be the, the correct entity, in my opinion, to manage all, all factors of this. And that Mr. Dan Johnson should be responsible since he's the primary beneficiary or a significant beneficiary, that he be responsible for all the costs incurred in this, along with his gigantic, I think 400 or 460 housing units and commercial use that's going out there. So those are my questions and comments. Great to go forward. So I will reiterate, closing my question, is that particular project the one that I called the fire marshal on?
Larry, I will let you-
Commissioner, Commissioner Higgins helping Kent Swatzky. It's not the Scotia Services District on the small peninsula.
Did I say Scotia? I, I bought something. I meant Samoa.
Well, you go to a lot of meetings. You go to a lot of meetings, man. So it gets, it gets hard.
Thank you for that clarification, Pat. And again, I think, just before I send it over to Larry, it's my understanding that this action tonight was predicated upon Green Diamond allowing the agreement to terminate. But can you do your best to answer Mr. Swatzky's question?
Yes, this is the exact same project that he was describing before.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll once again ask if there are any other public who would like to make comment on this issue or item. And hearing none, I will bring it back to the board for further discussion or a vote. Looks like we can go ahead and do a roll call vote, Larry.
Okay, Commissioner Higgins.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Doss.
Yes.
Mr. Marks.
Yes.
Mr. Dale.
Yes.
And President Coleman.
Affirmative. Okay, and then now we are moving on to item C. Consideration of lease of real property on the Samoa Peninsula, Humboldt County, with assessors parcel numbers 401112021 with Green Cloud, Inc.
I would recommend that the board remove this item from the, the agenda.
I make a motion, we table this item.
A second.
A clarification, are we tabling it to bring it back to a future agenda or are we just removing it?
Yeah, no, it's, 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 I think that's cleaner than canceling it from the agenda. We just table because we're not prepared to discuss it. Commissioner Higgins, on second.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the board? Would any members of the public care to comment on tabling this item?
Kent Swatzky, yes, please.
I believe it's just you, so go ahead.
I really appreciate you tabling this thing. I'm not aware of any tenants being replaced by this particular project. So that shouldn't bear any kind of thing as far as not having a staff report and lease documents prepared so that public can see this. I request that since those should have been in the packet last week, which was last Thursday, and we're ways off, that those be put in at least when the agenda is put out completely there with the, if you anticipate executing a lease, that that actually be put in, as I believe is required. And I, I do support tabling this, as noticed here, and without those documents, I cannot see how you could legally move forward. Those were some of my major objections regarding the Brown Act. So other than the fact that you are making a lease on number A to a different company than is stated on this, I, I applaud you on at least recognizing the fact that you need to cross your Ts and dot your Is on C. That's all I'm ever asking for, that we follow legal process, procedure, ultimate transparency, eliminate special meetings on special times and special dates that even, even certain ones of you didn't hear about until extremely recently here and even assumed that it was going to be on Thursday because we had been promised we would not be having these Wednesday, 5 to 6 o'clock meetings. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on that.
Thank you. Are there any other public who would wish to comment on this item? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. Can you call the vote?
Commissioner Marks.
Yes.
Commissioner Higgins.
Did he get muted again? It looks like he's muted.
I muted myself, yes.
Everyone's in control of their own muting.
I always said it was a conspiracy.
Mr. Doss.
Yes.
Commissioner Dale.
Yes.
And Commissioner Coleman.
Yes. Before we move on to adjournment, I have a point of order question because we don't have an item here for future agenda items. Is it appropriate to discuss future agenda items or to bring them up to put them on a future agenda at this point?
Nope.
Yeah, you can, you can provide direction to staff to agenda an item so long as there's not action taken on it.
Okay, thank you. I would like, and I realize this is going to be difficult to do with these remote meetings, but it has been noticed that we are past the time when we had agreed that we would be doing annual reviews of our executive director. And so I would like that put on a future agenda on closed session so that we can discuss how to move forward with that. Because I just think we should stick with those agreements that we made.
Yeah, Commissioner Coleman, this is good. We're in crazy times. You know, these things are routine, but at the same time, they're important for the institution. And, you know, I was just reading an article in the New York Times that said, you know, Zoom is like a filter and it's not good. This is great. We're trying to get to the public and maintain, if we're just sitting here and not doing business, the public would not be served. So thank you for all participating in this bold experiment. And let us continue to see if we can refine it while the circumstance dictates.
Thank you.
And I would, yes.
Coleman, you know, I'd like to just tag on that comment that when we go back to normal, I'd love to see us keep this format for our meetings when we do all get to be in the same room again together and meet and, and be a way that we can broadcast our meetings and record them. I think this is a super way-
and be a way that we can broadcast our meetings and record them. I think this is a super way to reach out to the public.
I thought maybe you meant the mute, the muting and unmuting and things like that.
You guys, you guys all want that button on me, don't you?
I believe I just need a bigger gavel. Okay, so with that-
No, but you know, actually Commissioner Coleman says, Commissioner Dos digressed there. As early as like 2008, Larry, I've always wanted us to be live. And so if we catch a little bit of updraft on a couple, three business deals, let's go live on Access Humboldt. I love supporting that institution. And you know, 450 channels, nothing else on. And I'm not going to propose that for the agenda right now, but let's talk about that.
Okay, now I'm going to interrupt it because like, as Ryan said, we can propose agenda items, but we're not supposed to be discussing things. And that's was seeming to be like a discussion, so.
I can't help it.
I hope everyone stays healthy.
I want to make a comment.
Go ahead and comment, Richard.
Yeah, I'm the quiet one here.
Yeah, go ahead, Richard.
Hey, I just wanted to compliment you on sharing that meeting. I know how there's trying times and trying to do new things. And I've hosted Zoom meetings myself, and I wanted to compliment you on doing it very patiently and in order. And so my compliments to you, Chairman Coleman. Thank you very much.
And it's giving people space, Stephen, and you, you, you're, you're good at it. And Miles Davis, one night after a jam session, all those guys were going, wow, that was the greatest ever. And he said, no, fellas, too many notes. And you are, you got it just right.
I've been upstaged, yeah.
I guess I'll allow that conversation. Anyway, I just wanted to wish everyone well and stay healthy in the trying times. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, my friends.
Night, everyone.
Good night.